Good morning and welcome to the city council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the "all" for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you now in the humblest way we know how, come about here's in humble hearts looking unto you. You're the author and finisher of our faith. God, we lift up every department head here at City Hall, we lift up our council, lift up our mayor. And the Bible tells us that the powers that be have been ordained of God. Pray for those in authority. So we ask for your leading, your guiding, your direction. There's no sufficiency within us as we carry out this meeting today. We think it'll be done decently and in order. We give you every bit of the praise, the glory, and all the honor, and all that a great said, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting held on November 7th. Second, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 3rd through the 9th.
So moved.
Second, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I don't believe we have any today, and we do not have any special guests today. So we'll go to item 8, unfinished business. Item 8A, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance amending City Code Section 106-87 and 106-88 regarding solid waste disposal, including transfer station and inert landfill user fees. This ordinance was presented for the first reading on November 7th and allows an owner or occupant to obtain a disposal permit to place large household goods curbside at a cost of $100. Additional fees would apply if the capacity exceeds a four-yard dumpster. Disposal permits and scheduled pickups will not apply to rental property move-outs or residential cleanouts. Garbage fee exemptions will also apply to disposal permit costs. The ordinance also establishes a $10 usage fee in addition to $50 per ton fee for use of the inert landfill by other municipalities, private collectors, or non-residents. City of Gadsden residents will pay a discounted fee of $5 if dumping from an automobile or truck that weighs less than 3/4 ton and is not a flatbed. All users will pay a $1 per ton ADM fee and a $2 per ton environmental fee. The fee for use of the transfer station will be $50 per ton or $10 per ton above the city's contracted cost, whichever is larger. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to clarify for the public here a couple of things. Number one, as some of you may know, if you meet certain requirements currently, you do not pay a garbage bill. So if you are below a certain income level, or if you're on disability or receive social security disability, there's several reasons why you could get one of those exemptions. With this debris disposal program we're implementing, if you qualify for those garbage exemptions, you will also be exempt from paying the fees for these pickups that we're talking about here. So those will go hand in hand, so you won't be expected to do that. And I also just want to say for the public benefit here, we have conversations going on about where throughout the year we will have pickup days or amnesty days, if you will, to where certain times of the year we will offer a day where we let everybody know ahead of time, hey, you can put some household debris out by there and there'll be no charge, we're going to pick it up. One of the things the City of Anniston does that I actually saw yesterday that I thought was really neat, two or three times a year, they actually will bring a roll-off dumpster into each district, and they announce those days ahead of time, and they'll put those roll-off dumpsters in central locations in the neighborhoods and say, hey, for the next week, this roll-off dumpster will be here. If you have any household debris or heavy items, rather than put them out on the side of the street, you can bring them to this dumpster and put them in there. So some of, those are just some of the things that we've been trying to do to make sure that this isn't just a, just a, it doesn't have a tremendous impact on the citizens, and it still addresses the environmental and the concerns we have with our landfill.
Any other comments? I'd like to add that our landfill is approaching or has approached capacity. So Public Works, along with the administration, is looking to expand that per state law, which is under, underworks currently. It's going to be about a $4 to $5 million expense in order to create a new landfill or to expand the one that we currently have. And so we're asking for some of these things in, probably in relation to that, to those upcoming expenses. But also, there's some items in here, just so the public is aware, and I know there's a lot to read, and all this is available online. I think, Michael, we would have all these rules, if you will, or the ordinances, but, yeah, once it's passed, right. So I would encourage the public to go and look so you can be in line with what we're asking for. You know, debris is, we're asking you not to place the debris in the street where it can impede traffic or foot traffic, automobile traffic or foot traffic. It also creates a lot of drainage stop-ups. So when you put leaves or grass clippings in the street and a good rain comes along, it'll push it down the hill to the bottom to the drain, and then we have, the Public Works is called out to go and to unstop the drain. So clippings, tree limbs, debris should be placed in your yard, not in the street, and the city will pick it up there. So please be mindful of that as we're into the leaf season. We're probably already, if it ever rains again, that's going to happen. So just be mindful not to, to where you're placing your debris. And it's also, I wanted to point out another item. Sorry for the delay here. Where did I see that? This is in section 1, item G. It says, "It shall be unlawful for an owner or occupant to place large household goods, such as couches, mattresses, carpets, refrigerators, furniture, appliances, et cetera, on the curbside without first obtaining a disposal permit to the revenue, from the revenue department. No items will be placed earlier than three days before the date scheduled by the Public Works Department for pickup to dispose. The cost of such disposal permit shall be $100 and must be paid before a pickup is scheduled. Additional fees shall apply when items exceed the capacity of a four-yard dumpster. This disposal permit and scheduled pickup shall not apply to rental property move-outs or residential cleanouts as determined by the Director of Public Works." And there are exemptions under section 106-71, which will apply to the cost of obtaining a disposal permit. I think that the impetus here is that our city has, in the last few years, somehow or another, we've just gotten to where everybody's putting everything on the, on the street. Mattresses, refrigerators, old air conditioners, just anything and everything, and the city's not designed to do that. We're not designed to pick that up. We're not supposed to do that. If you hire a contractor to do any work, your contractor is supposed to pick that up and take it to the landfill, not the taxpayers. Because what's been happening the last couple of years, we, the taxpayers, have been funding the removal of debris from your curbside, and that's not, that's not the way it's supposed to work. So we're, we're putting that into the ordinance. I think it was already in there, but we're just emphasizing that. And so there'll be a learning curve, and I'm sure there'll be a time where people, when we'll understand that hopefully everybody will know that these are the rules of the Public Works Department. But it just makes our city, as the mayor has launched this, his first term here in his first year to clean up Gadsden, you know, that, some of that impetus from the mayor came because he was taking industrial prospects through our city to look at Gadsden to locate a company here. And two times, the CEO of the multi-billion dollar company told our mayor, "You have a trash problem in your city." And the only thing the mayor could say was, "Yes, sir, we do, but we're going to clean it up." So this is part of that promise to, to clean it up. And I don't think any of us like looking at that when we walk out our front door or ride around in our neighborhoods. So bear with us as we move into this new direction to clean up our city. And if you have any questions, you can call your council member, or you can also talk to Public Works Department if you have a question of, "How do I do this? I need to get rid of this item, so what's the process?" So Public Works phone number is readily available on our website and Facebook page. So just kind of a heads up to the, to the community that this is the new, this is the new way of how Public Works is removing trash from our streets. Any other?
Mr. President, if I could just add one final point to that. A lot of people don't realize, when you talk about throwing away refrigerators and freezers and air conditioner units, old window units and stuff, all those items contain Freon, and it is illegal to release Freon into the atmosphere freely. So what that means is, if the Public Works Department gets a refrigerator, an old refrigerator, they're technically not allowed to just go throw that thing in the dump. They actually have to reclaim that Freon out of there and dispose of it properly legally. So when you talk about the cost to do that, when hundreds of people every year are putting their trash cans and their old refrigerators out, it could, the cost can add up tremendously really quick. So again, that's just something I think a lot of people probably don't realize, that that Freon actually has to be handled differently and disposed of differently.
That's exactly right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well clerk, we've had a motion and a second. If you'll take the vote.
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 18 regarding buildings and building regulations. This ordinance was also presented for the first reading on November 7th and establishes regulations for operating short-term rental facilities in the city. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just to clarify to everybody, this is something that the mayor's office and the administration have been working on for a while with the council's input. This will govern short-term rental properties, also known as Verbo or Airbnb, you know, and essentially what this does is it restricts what parts of the community you can have those short-term rental properties and what the process is for obtaining a license and a permit to operate one of those short-term rental properties. So this is something that our consultants at Goodwin Mills K. Wood, who's, who are responsible for the citywide master plan, have, have provided feedback and input on, and several of the actual agencies like Airbnb have provided some feedback on these regulations too. So I think this should go a long way to help alleviate a lot of citizens' concerns about, as we see more and more of these short-term rental properties popping up, this will help us govern how and where they'll be located.
Right, that's in the ordinance, it's in section 18-543 under the terms general. "It shall be unlawful for a person to rent or lease a short-term rental unit in a property currently zoned as an R1, which is a one-family residence district, as outlined in Chapter 130 of the City's Code of Ordinances, provided that any such property zoned R1 which were granted a special exemption for short-term rental use before July 1st, 2023, shall be allowed to maintain that zoning special expect, inspection use status subject to all other provisions of the law." So basically, it covers the residential, the R1 will not be able to have short-term rentals unless you're already grandfathered in. And to add to what Councilman Wilson said, this was, we relied heavily on Goodwin Mills and K. Wood doing our master plan. This is, I think, what they have seen commonly practiced over this, in the state, and so we're joining many other cities with this type of definition for short-term rentals. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9, we have one more public hearing today. This is the time and place as advertised to allow anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of alcoholic beverage license for South 11th Street Package Store at 1405 South 11th Street in District 5. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to say, since this is in my district, it's on South 11th Street, it's actually in the, in the strip mall that currently houses the Dollar General store there. The, the police department conducted a background check as they always do, and there were no issues with the applicant. The zoning department has signed off on this to, to confirm that it meets the current zoning requirements. There were no criminal history that was discovered during the background check of the applicant, so I don't have any objection to moving forward with this.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution awarding bid number 3530 for 5 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 PPV trucks. Two bids were received and opened on October 31st, but only one was found to be responsible and responsive. The NEAPA coordinator recommended awarding the bid to Donahue Chevrolet LLC in the amount of $254,057.50. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Five new police trucks, right?
That's correct. Five new police pickup trucks. That's, I think that brings the total to, oh gosh, 35 that we've now, thank you, you have 35 that we've now put into action and on our streets, and it removes 35 probably very, very, very old police vehicles that were probably dangerous to, certainly to the police officers, but to the public as well. So very proud to get these on the street, to assist our police department. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next six resolutions, which are items 11 through 16, authorize sponsorship agreements for fishing tournaments in 2024 at Gadsden Couche landing. If I need, I have done need to read all those, or did I just read them by doing that?
There, we can just, there should be a summary there, and then you can just refer to all the, all of them, and then entertain a motion for all of them at the same time.
Excuse me in the, hey, pardon me in the back of the room, but it's, if you could please refrain from speaking, kindly refrain so we can do the business up here. It's a little competing, and sorry to have to ask you to do that, but thank you so much for your cooperation. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to adopt all six resolutions.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification here, this is a series of sponsorship agreements for several fishing tournaments throughout the year with the Parks and Rec Department. Again, as the city clerk said, just a summary, one is an agreement with the Couche River Team Trail Tournament, the MLF LW Tournament, the Bass Nation Tournament, another Bass Nation Tournament, the Alabama Bass Trail Tournament, and the Alabama Student Angler Bass Fishing Association. That's all six of them.
Thank you. Any others? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all six resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all six resolutions, items 11 through 16 on the agenda.
Item 17 is reserved for new business. I believe we have some items today. Are we not doing, I'm sorry, this water conservation grant? Let me see. But it wasn't on the agenda.
Need to look at the pre-council folder, this water conservation fund grant.
There's a question about the water conservation grant?
That was last week.
That was in?
So y'all have already taken action on this?
Correct.
Okay, it was in my folder.
Oh.
But we've already taken action on that?
Yeah.
The 2024 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant?
We suspended the, this last quarter.
Okay.
Maybe it was this past year.
Okay. Yeah. Good deal. Like I said, it was in my folder, I just wanted to make sure we didn't. Yeah. Yeah.
There we go. All right, thanks. All right, so item 17, new business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I actually have several items here. Let's see, one of these is an application approving the issuance of a special retail alcoholic beverage license for the amphitheater. This is actually going to be the, the special event license that the concession stand will operate under, for the ice skating rink this December that they're doing down by Morana Park there, the, the ice skating on the Couche. So there'll be a food service and beverage service component to that throughout the month of December where people can buy food and beverages. And so this special event alcohol license will, will be for that concession stand area. So if there's no objections, given the timeliness, we're right around the corner. I mean, we're only two and a half weeks away from having that thing open. So if there's no objection, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
There's been a motion, is there a second? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I'm going to ask that we consider these both at the same time, the following two. These are actually two different resolutions from the engineering department concerning a couple of drainage projects that we're working on here in the city. One is the North Gadsden Park Goldenrod Avenue-Presley Avenue Drainage Project, and the other one is the Greenwood Avenue-Aero Head Drive-Paidon Road Area Drainage Project. And essentially what this is doing is allowing S and M E to assign their responsibility and assumptions for the agreement to TTL Inc. It's my understanding they're just transferring the agreement to another company who's going to perform the initial work to, to survey and prepare for these drainage projects. So in the interest of timeliness and trying to get these projects moved forward, I'd ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
There's a second. Councilman Avery.
Those in favor, to consider both resolutions under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Mr. President, I think we got one more. This is a resolution granting an easement to Alabama Power Company concern, this is associated with the new senior wellness center project in Alabama City. So this will give Alabama Power an easement so that they can continue to perform work to get that project to the finish line. So again, in the interest of getting that project completed, if there's no objections, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this easement resolution under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President. All right. I don't believe there's any others. So item 18, department reports, committees, boards. Do you have any of those this, this morning? We have one coming. Hey, good morning, Ron.
I'm Ron Lee, I'm with the Gadsden Police Department. I'm also the president of Alabama, vice president of State FOP, and president of local Gadsden National Order of Police. I'd like to start off by thanking everyone in the city council and the city for assisting us with a great trunk or treat, along with the fire department, the city parks and wrecks. We have served about 4,000 kids came through the parking lot of the venue, 1 to 31st, out of Orlando. I'm here today to talk about our Shop with a Cop program. We do every year, we've been consistent for the last five years. We took 36 kids to Academy Sports last year at $250 apiece. We do that on donations only, and it comes through the Fraternal Order of Police. We choose the kids by the SROs, principals, and counselors from the schools who are chosen for our area, and I'd like for consideration any donations that may be made by the city. I have a little handout here, I'm, Ms. Iva. Any questions?
What's the date that you'll be taking them shopping?
We're going to take them on the 21st of December to Academy Sports.
Okay, I saw the pictures from the last few years. I know that's a great day for y'all.
It is.
Even a better day for the children.
We, a lot of kids. We have kids that have not even been to Academy Sports, that live in the city of Gadsden, have not even been to Academy Sports before last year.
Ron, this is awesome what y'all do, and I'm, I'm happy to support, assuming that the grapes that stole Christmas up here, our city attorney doesn't tell me I can't spend discretionary dollars on it.
I understand.
But I'd be happy to support if, if we're allowed.
And thank you. Thank you very much.
Certainly would too. Thank you, Ron. Thank you for what y'all do. Are there any other departments, reports, or committees or boards that would like to present this morning? All right, seeing none, we'll move to section 19, which is citizen request to speak. First on our list is Fred Zachry. Mr. Zachry's coming to speak about restroom access at Carver, reuse of the George Baker Room, since the ROSF or the ROS program is moving. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Doing well, thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here before this august body, but it's not a pleasure to be here again asking for some civil consideration for what is culturally natural now, is to have people exposed to restroom facilities and public accommodations. Now, I'm going to leave it this way. You can either be in different two ways. One is conscious, the other is unconscious. One defers to the other. When the unconscious is realized as conscious, then you are, in fact, denying an opportunity to be civil. And this in case point goes to the heart of the matter, which is, if you're out at Carver, it's extortion to make people pay to rent a building so that they can use the toilets. That's simple extortion. And when we do it, we do it with a total disrespect for our citizens. I don't enjoy coming up here. I have a lot of other things I could be doing. I think you can run the city as best you can, and I don't, I don't enjoy coming up here. But nobody seems to take this seriously. It's just not taken seriously. So I implore you to take this seriously, because we get tired of peeing, urinating in space. Go out there and walk around the building and to the backside. It smells like urine. That's, that's just not what we do. You're talking about picking up trash and not dumping it here, not dumping it there. Well, then, give us the opportunity to dispose of body waste where it should be. I don't know how to make it any simpler. Shut it down or give us some restroom accommodations. The other thing is the ROS has moved, which was not a good tenant to begin with, as a member of the Central Carver Alumni Association, which we have an association now. so five oh one C three, we would like that space to operate. That's operated as a multicultural center with a modified library in it, to enhance the quality of our community by inbreeding, reading as a requisite for our community, by letting kids enjoy reading and being further exposed to something outside of a damaged community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next requesting to speak this morning is Mary Blankenship. And Ms. Blankenship is asked to speak about East Broad Street and Hope Street, and then, excuse me, railroad tracks and eighteen-wheelers.
That's because I asked you over seven years ago to fix East Broad Street. East Broad Street needs to be repaved. Down Hope Street, it needs to be repaved. It needs to be fixed where you turn off East Broad onto Hope. And then where your railroad tracks are, your spikes are sticking up out of the wood. And there's been two flats, I know of, on them. And that should be taken care of, and complaints have been made about it. And whether or not y'all can comp this is a different story. If I could, I would, but I can't. And so I gripe, and I'm gonna gripe again. That's it. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. All right, item twenty is remarks by mayor and council. Mayor's not here today, so I, okay, all right. Well, let's go to the mountain first. We'll start with District Seven with Councilman Robinson.
Yeah, everything's great on the mountain. Everything looks good. We're excited about the fall, about the Christmas, Christmas lights. We got a big, nice, new Christmas tree up there in the front lawn. If y'all ride by and look at that, it looks really good. I just want to ask the question to Mr. Zachary. Can I ask a question to Mr. Zachary? Is that possible or no?
No, not in this.
Well, I'll just speak. Well, I just want to know, like, he's talking about these events. Is this an event where you rent something but you don't have access to the inside of the building, like you're outside in the lawn? But that's my question. I just don't understand. I know this is the second time.
Maybe just follow up after. Well, yeah, and I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah, he's not gonna do that, so I can talk to you afterwards, no problem.
You could talk afterwards and maybe meet within the administration office, meeting the mayor's office.
Sure, no problem. I just noticed the second time up here you're talking about this, and I just want to kind of understand it a little better.
Sure.
And as far as the railroad, is that the city of Gaston, or is that something the actual railroad would have to handle itself?
I would look to Heath Williamson, but I believe I can answer for him. That's the railroad. That's not property of the city of Gaston. We have no jurisdiction to fix anything on a railroad track. Is that correct?
And how would a citizen report that? And where would they go? I mean, I'm just asking. My apologies.
So that's, there's a great question.
All right.
That is a hard one to answer. So we do have a couple of local railroad offices. It depends on which railroad it is. That one, I believe, is administered through A T N. You just have to find their local contact information, put a request in, just like we receive for any of our roadways.
Just go through that.
Yes, sir.
So Heath, do we do that when there's a request made? Or if you drive by and see that it's a problem, do you?
Anytime we receive a request, I always forward those requests on to the appropriate entity, whether it's whatever entity owns which right of ways getting complained on, whether it's a state road, a county road, a railroad property, et cetera. So I don't continuously follow up on them. We make their requests, known to those entities, and put in our file that such is done and move on.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Monatra.
Yes. This is our celebration of recycling week. We had a great day yesterday. Most of us were able to attend our elementary schools in our district and read to our third grade classes about recycling. And we have various contests going on this week with all schools, the high school, the middle schools, and the elementary schools. So there's a lot of action around recycling, and you'll see a lot of cardboard and a lot of contests for that cardboard. But I also want to make mention of the fact that we have an electronics recycling going on at the AMP parking lot, and it will be through Sunday. There are some guidelines for the electronics that are being taken in, but we want to make sure that everyone knows, and hopefully that sightline will be a good draw for any electronics recycling that anyone would like to do this week. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not gonna engage in any question and answer process, but I will say this. To the point about conscious and unconscious, Maya Angelou, I think, said it best, do the best you can till you know better, and when you know better, do better. And I think that's the point here with the bathrooms. I'm honestly tired of hearing about this. Give them the keys to the bathroom. This is ridiculous. I mean, I can't believe that we're even still talking about this. We've got big fish to fry in this city. Just give them the keys to the bathroom. As far as the railroad situation with the crossties and whatnot, obviously, I think the city engineer's done a great job as far as working with Aldott to fix the railroad issues on Meagan there. And I'll just share this one anecdotal story. Unfortunately, the world doesn't work this way anymore, but a former employee here at the city of Gaston, actually Shane Ellison, who's now the chief administrative officer for Edwah County, told me a story one time about his grandfather, who was the mayor of Montgomery, and his grandfather had gotten into a disagreement with the railroad companies because they weren't fixing some intersections and cross-sections. And now this is back in the fifties, I think. He had every public garbage truck and every public fire truck go out one morning, Monday morning, and park on the intersections of the railroads all over town, and told the railroad company he wouldn't move them until they fixed their issues. So unfortunately, in today's litigious environment, we don't have the luxury of pulling stuff like that off, but it sure would have been nice if we could. But anyway, I want to thank Principal Ash at Stripling and interim superintendent Blackwell for having me out to read to the kids yesterday at Stripling. That was awesome. I really enjoyed it. Third graders are so fun, and sometimes they say more than they should. So to all you parents out there, let's just use this as an example. If, for some reason, let's say, your aunt doesn't have a garbage can and burns all of her garbage in her backyard, you should probably tell your third grade nieces and nephews not to disclose that in a public reading session. But anyway, it was a great time, and it was awesome to see these kids. And to be honest with you, it was really amazing to see how aware they already were about recycling and different things they could do to help with recycling. So I'm really proud that Gaston is finally embracing recycling as a reality and something that can be a positive thing for our community. And I appreciate the mayor and this administration and Ms. Monatra with her works on the Public Works Committee to really push this initiative and start to educate our citizens about how important recycling is and how much it can be beneficial to not only the way our community looks, when we talk about garbage and trash collection and things, but also it can be a cost avoidance for this city. We can take this cardboard in, and we actually are able to sell it and offset the tremendous costs that we already have and the deficit that we have with the cost to pick up trash all over those communities. So it really can be part, a major part of the solution to our trash issue in Gaston. So thank you to everybody involved in organizing and promoting Gaston Recycles Week. I think it's an awesome initiative. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few announcements here. So if you are living in, on a street that have a sidewalk, and then from that sidewalk before getting to the street is a right of way, is that what we call it? A right of way. If you don't mind, it has been asked, I think it's been going on for quite some time, if you will cut that right of way. Most of those right of ways are very small spaces. Just give an example on Tuscaloosa Avenue from that sidewalk before you get to the street, there's a small patch of space of right of way. Again, that helps with having the time of public works coming to cut that. It'll help that, it'll keep your yard, that street, and the neighborhood and community looking neat and well. And it's just a small right of way. So if you'll do that, I know that's been asked for quite some time. So I've been getting some calls about certain areas with right of ways concerning that. One of the big, big congratulations to Gaston City Football Team, staff, administration out there at the school with how they have been conducting themselves with the police officers, the chief, and his staff as it relates to safety, things of that nature. Great game, football player. We tailgated. And so thank those. I'm gonna actually ask that some others come out and tailgate. Where we tailgated, there's plenty of space, and so it created a great atmosphere. The kids liked it. They was very interested in seeing people on the outside of the stadium actually stayed out there. We stayed out there till the entire game was over. And so, again, big congratulations to them as they go into their second round of playoffs, and they're hosting it at Gaston City this Friday. So again, we'll try to get back and get out there and tailgate and support the Gaston City Titans in all of their academics as well as athletic achievements. As it relates to reading, listen, for those that are listening, and as you can pass the word along, let's start at home. Let's find some time to where that we're taking some time and getting our young people off their phones, their devices, and taking a moment where we get and we have some personal time to them and read. I know we all are working, have so many family issues and things that are going on in our personal lives and things of that nature, but reading is very essential to our young people. And so let's take the time. Also, we have one of the best libraries in the state of Alabama. Let's use it, as well as staff and librarians. So let's make sure that we go out there, check out some books. With one of our, with one of our speakers today, since we're kind of careful with names and stuff, with turning a space into a very conducive space as it relates to District Three in that community, in that particular facility, which we had a library there at one time. And so, again, bringing that component back so that it'd be easy accessible to those young people in that community, as well as older people also. Also to speak to as it relates to the restrooms, I do agree with Councilman Wilson as it relates to that. I'll be more than happy to be one of the key holders. It, I understand with different administrations come different. Things are done and taking place, and I get it. I'm learning it also. We didn't have that issue in the past, and so as it relates to a particular organization and the events that are held on those grounds, and so it's a little, it's something new. And so I do, again, agree with Councilman Wilson on that standpoint, and I'm open for discussions as it relates to what's the reasons and why and why not. But nevertheless, hopefully also, we can move past that soon so that that can be a closed chapter. Thanks to all of those that played a part in yesterday's meeting. Thank Mr. Johnson, Ms. Moffett, and all of those, Mr. Engineer, brain just went. Mr. Williamson, and everyone that played a part, and also to the residents that came out to make their input known as it relates to replacing and creating an atmosphere of fun, safe, and family-oriented atmosphere back into that community. I think that the conversation was well-received, the questions and statements. And so hopefully that everyone, of course, everyone has a role to play in it. So the deadline is this Wednesday with turning in those documents. If you need a document, I made a lot of copies yesterday, did a lot of walking around and getting a lot of those signed. So if you need some, you're watching this, you're seeing this, please message me as soon as possible so that we can get those to you and get those turned back in so that we can meet the deadline with the hopeful of getting this achieved and accomplished. Final, I would say, thank you to all of those as we, the unique thing about, I guess, the Avery Knows family, we don't have many deaths on a regular basis, which is a blessing. However, that gives us time to, we have a very close connection to our family members, especially our seniors. And so losing one of those iconic members of our family or any member as it relates to death is very, very dear to us. And so to all of those that reached out, thank you so much for your prayers, your concerns. I ask for those that know who I'm speaking of, please continue to pray for his wife as she continued to go through that loss. That is a tough one for her as well as the children. But nevertheless, again, thank you all for your condolences and those things that you have done in a time of our bereavement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, I'm a little hoarse this morning. Just want to start with this shot with a cop to the Gaston Police Department. This is a great idea. We love it, and certainly we look forward to sponsoring a child with this event. Also, I want to give a shout out to the Gaston Fire Department, first responders. Sunday, right at the church, right here on First Street, we decided to have dinner with the family, and one of the family members collapsed and stopped breathing. You know, when a person has a heart attack, usually, sometimes they can talk to you, tell you what's wrong, what they feel. But if a person goes into cardiac arrest or a massive heart attack, time is of the essence. So the person stopped breathing, and immediately a family member responded quickly to give chest compressions. But we lost a pulse. There was no pulse. But within a few seconds, a few minutes, the fire department arrived. First responders arrived, and I don't even remember the faces because there were so many people. But I'm just happy to report that the family member is now in critical care at Riverview, but they're alive. The defibrillator did not kick in, which is recorded in Birmingham. Birmingham has reported to us that there is no indication that this happened. So if it were not for the first responders and the person doing the chest compressions, one of our church members wouldn't be alive. So I just want to tell our fire department, emergency responders, thank you for all that you do. I say this a lot many times, you don't always have your name called, and people don't always see it. But I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you. We finally made it one year in office, so again, be patient with us. We got concerns in all the district. I know, Mr. Williamson, do you remember how much we spent on Hope Street? Right off the top of your head or close to it? Just part of, just that half of Hope Street?
It was, it's actually just under about nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, so a million dollars right there doing part of Hope Street. So I just want to encourage you to be patient. All over the city, you're gonna find some streets that have been paved. So we're hearing you. We're trying to address those. Some of it is beyond our jurisdiction. For example, we need a light. We've had fatalities on the new highway. Well, that's not a city highway. That belongs to the state. But our engineer, Mr. Scott, Ms. King, we're all working to get the information to them, and they're getting it to the state to still try to get what the citizens need. So just want you to know that we hear you, and we're responding to you. It may not happen as fast as you would like it, but we are working on it. So again, thank you to the department heads, to the council, and to our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. I see that Ms. King just left, but I want to say thank you to Ms. King and to Public Works for, I know that some ordinances have changed, but there were a couple of problems in District One, and they were handled, kind of, the constituents were kind of handled, kind of roughly or whatever, but thank you for responding. And the efforts that are being made to really make the transition from curbside to non-curbside with certain items. Thank you for going back and making that situation, correcting it and making it right. She's already left, but thank you, Mr. Howell, for that. And then, second, I want to say, give a shout out to Ms. Smitherman and Adam. And then, second, I want to say, give a shout out to Ms. Smitherman and Adams Elementary School and the third graders there. I had an awesome time reading with them on yesterday as it related to recycling, and those third graders really took it to another level past cardboard. And so we were excited about that, and just excited about how they were excited about cleaning up our city and doing their part on their levels. I want to ask, I don't know the proper way to do it, but I have conversated with Parks and Wrecks, and so is it proper for me to ask if I can, if Mr. Zachary will wait afterwards, just so we can, I can give an update and hear him? I would like to ask that, if you will, Mr. Zachary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Latham, all right. Just a few announcements. It was handed that on this November the 18th, I believe that's Saturday, right? I'm not looking at a calendar. It's November 18th. From 11:00 to 2:00 at the Carver Community Center, there's a community Thanksgiving. This is sponsored by the city of Gadsden, the County of Edgewall, Edgewall County Commissions, and Thomas Worthy and GFI. It's from 11:00 to 2:00, it's dine in or take out. So if you are around on Saturday morning at 11:00 through 2:00 on Tuscaloosa Avenue at the Carver Community Center, there's going to be a community Thanksgiving. It's free, and everybody is welcome. I too had a great day yesterday, reading to the third grade at Yer Brown Elementary. Thank you to the teachers and to Katie Holland, the principal. And just like the other council members have related, the third graders are pretty sharp. They were tuned in, had some good comments. One child even knew about which plastics, you know, there's one through, what, five or whatever, and they were, they were in tune with that. They asked some hard questions, like, why can't we have trucks pick up the recycling, just like they pick up the garbage? And I explained that there's a cost value there. There's a proposition where that would make us lose money if we had to, you know, have new employees and new trucks and things like that, and they understood. But, and they all kind of knew where the recycling center was, or most of them did. So that was, that was a fun time, and it's fun to see the faces and the eyes light up when you're talking about something like recycling. They really were buying into it and are competitive, and they want to win the prizes, and they want to have the best recycling turnout. So it, that'll be interesting to see how that goes. So thank you to the, to all the schools that let us come in and read. And we'll end on a happy note here. We have a special birthday today. I believe it's Sergeant Jacob, this was her idea, so I know what you're going to do. But we want to wish you a happy birthday. Sergeant Entrickin leads our, the new Police Street Crime Task Force, and is playing a large part, he and his team, of cleaning up our city at the direction of the administration and the mayor. So Sergeant, thank you for all you do, and wish you a happy birthday. And I can tell by the, he doesn't want us to sing to him. And he's got a badge and a gun, so I'm a little leery to. But we do wish you a happy birthday, and it's a pleasure to have you here with us today. So that being said, we will all be adjourned. Thank you.